One. We could go ahead and anybody out in the vivestivule will either shut the doors or come on in. Excellent. So, good evening, everyone. My name is Robert Parkhurst. I'm Mayor Pro Tem of this fabulous city, and I'm also going to be your moderator this evening. So, welcome to the first of three presentations about the Sierra Madre Public Safety Special Tax, also known as Measure PS. We're thrilled to have you here tonight for what promises to be an informative and engaging discussion about our community's future. At tonight's hall, we'll be diving into the history of our fire department, the city's budget, and the public safety special tax, critical topics that directly impact every one of us. This in-person event is not just about sharing information, it's about coming together as a community, connecting with one another, and engaging in a meeting dialogue with our city officials. First, we're going to start off with City Manager Jose Reynoso. He will provide a history of the Sierra Madre Fire Department. And then Acting Finance Director Satenum Rate is going to talk about our finances. And then City Attorney Alex Gargosian will talk about the measure on the ballot. Few logistics before we start. We've got a good audience here tonight. And what we ask you to do is to, as we do with most of our meetings here in City Hall, is we have speaker cards. So, we ask you to fill out speaker card and hand it to one of the folks in the back. So, if you just kind of hold it up when you're done, they'll come and grab it. We're going to group all the questions together and then answer them together. We really encourage you to fill them out because we want to hear from you. And then, if we've got time at the end, we will have a roving mic that'll come around and we can ask additional questions. So, without further ado, we'll go ahead and get started. So, first, let me introduce you to Jose Reynoso, our city manager.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem.
Mr. Mayor, take it away.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Good evening, everyone. My name is Jose Reynoso, and I'm the city manager of the city of Sierra Madre. Thank you all for being here tonight. And I want to take a moment to reflect on the long history of the Sierra Madre Fire Department and how it's been an essential part of our community for over 100 years. In December of 1920, Sierra Madre experienced a Sierra Madre Canyon Fire that destroyed the dance pavilion and bathhouse. And within a month, on January 21st, 1921, a fire broke out at the Sierra Madre Bakery. At the time, the nearest fire department was 30 minutes away, and by the time they arrived, the fire had done serious damage. It became clear that our city needed its own fire department, and that's how the Sierra Madre Volunteer Fire Department was born. In the beginning, our fire department was made up of local volunteers, men and women from the community who were willing to step up and help. They responded to fires and medical emergencies with dedication and bravery, truly representing the spirit of Sierra Madre, neighbors helping neighbors. In 2008, Sierra Madre residents took a significant step by voting to increase the utility users' tax so that we could meet the industry standard requirement to upgrade our medical response from basic life support EMTs to an advanced life support paramedic program. This enabled us to offer advanced medical care, but also required us to hire paramedics, which increased cost. The combination of volunteer and paid personnel enabled us to continue to provide the best service possible. Even with these improvements, we continued to face challenges. Firefighters were leaving for full-time jobs at other departments, forcing us to explore other options, including contracting with outside fire agencies. In addition, national standards require a minimum number of firefighters and equipment for serious incidents like house fires or major accidents. Since our small, mostly volunteer fire department didn't always have enough resources, we called on neighboring agencies for assistance. While we received help when we needed, there were often delays because we had to wait for firefighters from other cities to arrive. This slowed the overall response time, which was critical during emergencies. Another challenge we faced was with automatic aid agreements, where cities assist each other during emergencies. These agreements are meant to be reciprocal, but because we lacked the staff and equipment to provide the same level of assistance, it strained our relationship with nearby cities. Neighboring cities required that Sierra Madre employ a professional, full-time fire department to participate in automatic aid. And that's why, on September 1st, 2019, the Sierra Madre Fire Department became a career department. This was a big milestone for our city, allowing us to hire 13 new firefighters and fully join the Area C Unified Response System, which includes 12 other fire departments. Now, we have access to additional resources and can give and receive help immediately without delays. This system has fostered a true partnership with all departments, where all departments work together to protect each other's communities, making us better equipped to handle emergencies here in Sierra Madre. While becoming a full-time department was a big achievement, it also brought new financial challenges. Operating a full-time department is costly, and the city has struggled to recruit and retain staff. To help address this, we increased the salaries of both fire and police departments. Sierra Madre is a small city, just three square miles, with a population just over 11,000 residents. However, we are a full-service city with our own police, our own fire, public works, recreation services, utilities, and even our own library. Our public safety departments are exceptional, with quick response times, with four minutes for our fire department and three minutes for our police departments, with highly trained personnel. This is one of the reasons why residents love living here. It's a safe and secure place to call home. However, maintaining these high standards comes at a cost. The fire department's personnel budget is $3.4 million, and the police department's personnel budget is $4.8 million. In 2023, the city council approved increases in the firefighters and police personnel budgets to provide salaries competitive with neighboring cities of similar demographics. However, these increases have accelerated the growing gap between revenues and expenditures and contributed to a compounding structural deficit. And that's why, on July 9th, the city council unanimously supported the public safety tax. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you, City Manager Reynoso. So, now, we're going to hear from Acting Finance Director Satenum Rate, who will review and discuss the city's budget.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Good evening, everyone. My name is Satenum Rate, and I'm the Acting Finance Director at the city of Sierra Madre. Thank you all for being here tonight as we dive into the important details of the city's budget for fiscal year 2425. As we know, the financial health of our city directly impacts the quality of life we enjoy and the essential services we rely on. Tonight, I would like to share some critical facts about our current budget and the challenges we face. The city's general fund is projected to have a balanced budget for fiscal year 2425 with $17.2 million in revenues and $17.2 million in expenses. Property taxes, property taxes and utility taxes are the city's two main sources of income, accounting for 70% of the general fund receipts. The city of Sierra Madre receives $21.91 for every $100 collected, approximately 22%. Regarding expenditures, most agencies anticipate that their personnel costs will make up a majority of their general fund expense. For fiscal year 2425, personnel expenses are anticipated to be about 65% of the city's general fund. The full personnel cost for public safety includes $3.4 million for fire and $4.8 million for police, which includes wages and fringe benefits. The city of Sierra Madre currently meets its reserves policy standards. Per our current fund balance policy, the minimum fund balance in the general fund is set at 25% of operating expenditures, which is in line with the minimum recommended by the Government Finance Officers Association. Reserves in excess of 25% can be spent on capital and/or one-time expenditures and cannot be used to fund recurring operating expenses. If today's revenues and expenses were to continue as is, without adjustments or new revenue streams, we may struggle to meet our critical operating needs in the future. The city prepared a five-year general fund budget projecting, projection using 3% increase for revenues and 5% for expenditures. Looking forward, the city of Sierra Madre does not have a structurally balanced budget. In order to bridge the gap, we need a structural change in either revenues and/or expenditures. A well-balanced mix of revenue sources is essential to stabilize Sierra Madre's financial base. This mix enables us to continue providing the essential services our residents expect and deserve. The figures on the slide illustrate the financial challenges we face as a city and our ability to continue providing essential services. As we look toward the future, it is imperative that we explore solutions to close this gap, whether through revenue generation, cost management, and/or other strategic measures.
Thank you, Acting Director Rate.
If today's revenues and expenses were to continue as is, without adjustments or new revenue streams, we may struggle to meet our critical operating needs for the future. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you, Acting Director Rate. All right, and so then our final presentation this evening is going to be given by City Attorney Alex Gargosian, who's going to discuss the facts and details of the Sierra Madre Public Safety Special Tax.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. As stated, my name is Alex. I'm the city attorney for the city. The Sierra Madre Public Safety Special Tax was placed on the ballot after it was submitted to the city clerk on March 1st, 2024, with all the signatures. Then, I was statutorily tasked with drafting the title, the ballot summary, the impartial analysis, and the question presented to the voters that you're going to see on the ballot. So, it's important that, in my role as the person drafting that language, that we remain neutral in this, and we provide just information to the members of the public that request it, and in this forum as well. If members of the public are interested in arguments for or against, I know we have, I think we have two of the proponents here, James Walsworth, I believe in the back there, and Theodore Sarif is here. I don't know if he's here, but he's the other proponent. If you're interested in arguments for this measure, you can speak to them. But if you want to hear the reasons about, but if you want to hear about the measure itself, or you have any specific questions about the finances, the history, or the language, you could speak to us. So, let's start with the first question. What is a special tax and how is it different from a general tax? The revenues of a general tax are deposited in the city's general fund and can be used for any legitimate municipal purpose. In contrast, the revenues of a special tax are deposited in a special fund and can be only used for a specific purpose. In this case, the ballot measure proposes to fund police, fire, and paramedic personnel costs. And personnel costs is a defined term, but it's basically just wages and fringe benefits. Next question, what is a tax and how much revenue are we talking about? Subject to certain exceptions listed in the measure, such as for low-income people or undeveloped land, et cetera, the tax rate is based on the character of the property. So, a single-family residential parcel will see a $480 per parcel per year increase on their county property tax bill because we're going to contract with the county to collect these funds. A multifamily residential parcel will see a $576 per parcel per year increase. And a non-residential parcel will see a $660 per parcel per year increase. Now, if anyone, if any of these parcel owners believe that they're exempted from the tax, assuming this tax passes, they can apply to the finance department for an exemption. The city's finance department estimates that the tax will generate approximately $2,377,000 for the first fiscal year, and that's going to be collected in the '25, '26 fiscal year, which is enough to cover the city's projected budget deficit for that first fiscal year. Next question, how can residents guarantee the funds will be used for the proper purpose? First, the funds will be placed in a special fund. They won't be commingled with the city's other revenues that go into the general fund. So, residents will always know how much money is going in and out of that account. Second, on January 1st of each year, the finance director is statutorily required to file an annual report in a public meeting before the city council to report on the amount of special tax funds collected and expended. Third, the city's books are audited annually by a third-party certified auditor. This auditor is required to ensure that the funds are used for the stated purpose of public safety personnel costs, and the auditor's findings are reported at a public city council meeting like we do every year. Next question, what makes this measure different from the existing utility users' tax? The utility users' tax, or UUT, is a general tax on utilities such as water, electricity, and gas that funds a range of city services. The important term there was "general tax." Unlike the special tax being contemplated here, while UUT funds have been used to support the police and fire department personnel, the funds generated from this ballot measure are legally limited to public safety personnel costs. In that sense, this ballot measure is a more reliable source of public safety funds. Also, unlike some other sources of funding like the sales tax or the general property tax, all funds from this measure will remain under local control, meaning they don't need to be shared with the state or the county. Because, as you might know, we don't collect, even though we collect the sales tax locally, residents pay it, not all the sales tax funds are retained in the city. Some of that has to be shared with the state and the county. Same thing with the property tax. While it might be collected among the residents, it has to be shared with other government agencies. That's not true with respect to this special tax. Three points worth noting about this tax. First, this tax is not indefinite. If adopted, the special parcel tax will take effect on July 1st, 2025, and will expire on July 1st, 2032. The voters will need to reassess whether they want to continue this tax in seven years. Second, the parcel tax will increase annually based on changes in the Consumer Price Index. So, residents can expect a slight increase year over year to keep up with inflation, and the minimum annual increase per the measure language is going to be 1%. Third, special taxes placed on the ballot by a city council require 2/3 majority vote to pass. So, usually, if it's a special tax, you need 2/3 of the voters to approve it. But here, the measure was placed on the ballot by the residents and not the city council. So, as a result, this measure will only require a majority of the voters in order to pass. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you, City Attorney. Excellent. So, a reminder again, we've got green cards in the back. So, if you've got questions, we encourage you to fill out the cards and give it to one of the folks there. We've gotten a couple of cards in, so I'm going to read them off here. So, the first question is, has the cost of merging with the county or other smaller cities, has that been explored, and if so, what is the difference in cost?
Thank you for the question. So, the cost, in recent years, the cost has not been explored. We did do some preliminary research into this, and we determined that reaching out to LA County for an estimate on fire that the cost would likely increase by $1 million for each police or fire if we were to contract for the same level of service that we currently have.
Great, thank you very much. So, we've got a couple of questions. Some of them are a little bit similar. So, let me ask two of them together here. And I think you have a similar answer. So, the first one is, with the budget in the red, what's the backup plan if this measure doesn't pass? And then another question is, what happens if this does not pass? So, what do we do if this doesn't pass?
So, one of the things that we do on an annual basis is we do a zero-based budget. And that's a little bit different than what most cities do, where they just increase each department's budget by CPI. Here in Sierra Madre, we go line by line on every line item to justify that that tax dollar needs to be spent. So, we're going to continue to do that. We're also exploring other options to bring in additional revenue. Right now, we're in the process of evaluating our downtown to see, to evaluate our demographics, to understand what it is exactly that our residents are looking for in their downtown so that we can bolster our downtown economy and hoping that that will bring in additional revenue. We also contracted with Tesla to bring in 16 superchargers into our downtown. And we expect increased tax revenue through the UUT for vehicles that are charging and increased traffic and increased tax base for the businesses in town. So, we're expecting an economic boost. So, we're exploring every option. We're looking at how we can reduce costs internally and what we can do to bolster our economy to bring in additional tax revenue as well.
Great. Thank you. So, another question here is, there's a number of things that I think we've hit on on the plan if we continue to fall in the red, but there's another part of this question. It said, did the city think about the long-term cost of having a full-time fire department?
So, at the time, the city really didn't have a choice. We were in a position where we needed to go to a full-time career fire department, and it was understood that the city would have to, at some point, find a new revenue source, whether it would be through a city-initiated tax. But a new revenue source was going to be needed to maintain and support the new fire department that we have. I think some of the things that complicated things were COVID. One of the things that we saw during the COVID era is we saw vacancies in fire departments throughout the region. And what this did is, in a sense, drove up, it's a supply and demand issue. There was less firefighters and high demand. So, we saw agencies offering bonuses, increasing salaries, and so the job market became very competitive, became difficult for us to retain employees. We had to increase the salaries of our employees, of our firefighters and police departments, to keep them here. And so, that accelerated the timeline on when we thought these budget forecast projections, these deficits, were going to happen. So, I hope that answers the question.
And I'll add one thing to it. You know, this came before council, when the decision was being made, and there was a strong feeling from the community that they wanted to have a fire department in the city. We have a long history, as we saw, of a fire department, and the message to the city council was they wanted to have our own fire department. Go on to the next question. So, it's a two-part question. It says, how would this measure benefit the police and fire department? And will this take away from the police department and fire department existing budgets?
So, the measure is limited to personnel costs. Personnel costs, like I said, is defined term. So, I'm just going to read out what personnel costs are. Personnel costs, the funds can only be used for personnel costs, and they include salaries for full-time police and fire employees, wages for part-time police and fire staff, overtime wages, PERS-related costs or retirement, term life insurance, deferred compensation, health insurance, disability insurance, Medicare employee portion, and state unemployment insurance. So, that's, per the measure, the definition of what personnel costs are. And just to reiterate, the funds that come from this special tax can only be used for that specific purpose.
Mayor Pro Tem, can you repeat the second portion of it?
Sure. So, will this measure take away from police department and fire department existing budgets?
So, we see this measure bringing in additional revenue to help fund and maintain our existing police and fire levels. We don't see it reducing their budgets, no.
Great, thank you. All right, so we've got another question here. So, the tax increase is based on CPI, and that's vague. Can you explain a little bit more about the CPI and what goes into it and what that percentage is and what's it based on?
Sure. So, the CPI is intended to account for inflation. Basically, that's the role of CPI. The CPI specifically used in this measure is defined as, if you just give me a moment, I'll find it. So, it's defined as the Consumer Price Index for all urban consumers, all items index, LA, Long Beach, Anaheim, as published by the United States Bureau of Labor Statistics. Now, that's probably just as vague as, you know, anything you knew before. But to get a better sense of it, it might be helpful to see what the CPI was just last year. I don't know if Acting Finance Director has that number, what CPI was last year. You do not? Well, that's a number probably we can provide at a later time so people can get a sense as to what CPI was maybe last year and the year before to project out.
Great.
But, and sorry, one other thing.
Yes, please.
It's really difficult. If you heard us earlier, we said that we can estimate what the first year's revenue is going to be because there's no CPI adjustment that we have to do. We just have to figure out how many parcels are going to be taxed at what rate, and then we apply that, and so we get the initial number. The reason we don't project out what this, uh, special tax is going to bring in is because we can't estimate CPI. It's purely speculative. Uh, we don't know what the Department of, um, Labor Statistics is going to publish as the appropriate rate that we should apply going forward. So, we can tell you what CPI was, but we can never tell you what CPI is going to be, because we're not, we can't tell the future.
Great, thank you very much. All right, I think, yes, so we've gone through the cards. Do we have any more cards from audience members here? We've got another one here. Great. That's fine. All right. Oh, this is a great question. So, can we hear a little bit more about turnover and recruiting challenges with police and fire?
Yeah, to talk about turnover, I'd like to see if I can invite our, our police or, or fire chief up to come and talk about, um, what we've experienced in the departments over the last several years.
And, let me add that, that another part to it, and that is, is are we planning to increase or maintain, um, our staffing levels? Is the, is the other part of the question.
Um, thank you for the question, and, uh, City Manager, absolutely right. And, uh, Mayor Protam, that is a great question. Since we've become full-time career department, we have absolutely struggled with, uh, recruitment and retention. The numbers, um, we, we just couldn't keep up with neighboring agencies. Um, for lack of better terms, we were getting poached. We were getting all of our good employees taken away from us. Which I can't, I can't blame, we had outstanding people, and we still do. Uh, it struggled to a point where at one time, especially during COVID, we typically run three shifts of, uh, five personnel apiece. We had to combine to two shifts, with people working three days instead of two. Three days in a row instead of two in a row. It put a big strain on personnel, put a big strain on their abilities to, to function at their highest peak, and it definitely put a strain on their families. So, um, that part had to get answered. Uh, with that, uh, as, uh, City Manager alluded to, uh, salaries were increased. That has brought us to a good retention. We are fully staffed at this moment, and we don't see anybody leaving soon. So, uh, I do believe that we, we've handled that issue. And, um, for the second part, uh, we are currently going through a, a master plan, which is going to outline some of the, uh, the ideas where we're gonna come up strategically of what we're gonna see in the future. So if that is increase in staffing to help, uh, enhance the services of our fire department, those are things we're gonna be taking a look at in the future to see if those needs can be met, uh, both, um, operationally and fiscally. So, um, hopefully that answers the question, appreciate it.
Good evening, thank you again for that question. So currently with the, uh, police department, we're actually down one police officer as far as retention. However, we go in waves. It's like a revolving door. We have agencies all around us. So for example, Arcadia, I think they're experiencing a shortage of seven to nine officers. Monrovia has about four. San Gabriel has about seven that they're short. We're only short one. While I can't offer benefits, pay, et cetera, what we do offer is a supportive work environment and a supportive community. So that's probably what's retained our employees here. However, I can't compete with what's out there. Um, I'll give you an example. Everybody's always, uh, poaching in everybody else's department. So just to give you an example, Torrance PD has a hundred thousand dollar sign-in bonus, currently. And then they give a fifteen thousand dollar bonus a year, just to retain the officers that are there. Uh, we have an agency, I believe, uh, uh, one of our local agencies is giving a fifty thousand dollar bonus. I can't compete with that whatsoever. The only thing I can really provide is, like I said, a supportive community and a supportive work environment, one of, uh, trust and transparency. So currently, we're not experiencing that, but it's a revolving door. Thank you.
Mayor Protam, I'd like to add, in both our fire and police departments, we're in the process of conducting master plans. One thing that's important to understand is that our fire department is, is in its infancy, um, and there are likely, uh, gonna be additional needs. Our police department also, uh, operates on, on bare bones. And, and these, both of these, uh, master plans are gonna identify, um, where those needs are, and then it's gonna be up to, uh, our police, our police chief, fire chief, myself, and the city council to strategically decide how we're gonna, uh, fill those needs.
All right, our next question here. Thank you. All right. Ah, great question, okay. So, um, the proponents of the measure have said that we need a tax to update the fire department, uh, uh, such as updating the living quarters, uh, updating and expanding the living quarters. These funds can't be used for anything but wages, so what's the plan for updating the physical spaces?
So, we do recognize and we understand that the fire station was never built or designed for a full-time career department. It was always, uh, it was developed for a volunteer department. Uh, now that building, uh, houses male and female, uh, firefighters, and, and that's basically their second home. So, we know that our general fund reserves, um, don't have the capacity to do the capital improvements that, that building needs now. Um, we have estimates in the tens of millions of dollars. Um, so, one of the, one of our responsibilities, uh, that, that we undertake is to see when there's opportunities for state and federal funding, um, and to see what other opportunities there are, uh, to, to bring that building up to the standard that we need for our full-time fire department.
If I can expand on that, um, can you give examples of some of the ways that we have met some of these unfunded mandates, some of these, these things that we've needed? Some examples, maybe, you know, where we've gotten some grant funding recently? Can you give us an idea of kind of, you know, what, what, what is that like? Like, where are we getting some of these sources that, that sometimes come above and beyond the property tax and UUT?
Uh, oh. Okay. Um, I, I, I can give, uh, some examples, and, and I think in the state of the city, uh, the mayor gave a great example, and I, and I believe of the, I believe it's seventeen million dollars of capital improvement projects that we have this year?
About fifteen.
Oh, fifteen million dollars of capital improvements. Um, it was a very small impact on the general fund. I believe it was, uh, less than ten percent general fund impact? So the majority of that money came from outside, from outside agencies, including, including state and federal grants. Um, a, a great example is our, our library grant, where we received two grants. We received one for ten million dollars, and then we received another grant for, uh, just over three hundred thousand dollars with, with matching funds from ARPA to make it a total of ten point six. Um, so we always leverage, uh, our, our ability to, to, um, get money from state and federal agencies, but it's important to note that that money isn't always available. One of the reasons why we were successful in getting, getting the ten million dollars is because during COVID, the state had a surplus. Uh, if, if we were to reach out to them in these current financial conditions, the likelihood that we would get a, a, a grant of that magnitude is, is slim to none. Uh, but we continue to look for opportunities, um, and we do have grant consultants, uh, that, uh, work with us. They work with every department to identify the needs of the department. Um, and when those opportunities come up, um, each department will apply for those. Uh, another great example is, is our, our, uh, our police department applied for a cannabis grant, where they received, uh, over three hundred thousand dollars. That's gonna provide, uh, a vehicle for our officers, um, and some equipment for them to use to help keep our community safe, um, and free from, uh, uh, impaired drivers. Um, so those are a, a couple of good examples.
Can I give another example too?
Please.
Is, is, when there's development in the city, the city collects something called development impact fees. Those development impact fees are specifically used for infrastructural improvements that are gonna be needed due to the increased demand as a result of the development. So there's separate accounts that exist at the city level that are collecting these development impact fees. One of the development impact fees we collect are for public safety. So as that account grows with development in the city, people are building ADUs, they're remodeling their homes, new homes are being built, that account accumulates. And then we identify a project, like, let's say we're gonna have a new, uh, police department building. Those, those funds will then be pulled into that, um, into that construction of that building for whatever infrastructural purposes needed. Also worth noting is the city council did negotiate with the developers, uh, on the Meadows project, and got, I think it was two hundred thousand or so dollars to help fund infrastructural improvements. So, so development, my point is, development in the city also results in, um, increased funding for infrastructure. That's one important source of funding.
Great, thank you very much. Got another question, great, thank you. Another long one, there, people out here have got lots of thoughts, this is really good. Okay. Great, okay. So, um, so assuming that, um, we don't want to, to lose our police and fire personnel, and we're, we're faced with, uh, the competing, competing wages out there, to, to losing personnel, and people, um, hiring them away from us, uh, what would happen i- if this measure doesn't pass? So what would we do to, to keep, keep the personnel? So that's part one of the question. And the second part of the question is, is that, um, would a loss of personnel put us out of compliance with the, the, um, the police and fire agreements that, that we've got? You'd mentioned earlier that, you know, that we're required to, to have a, a professional fire department. If we lose people, does that put us out of compliance with that requirement?
So, one of the things that I don't wanna do is speculate onto what could happen, what could, what, what I can tell the community is that our city council and, and staff remain committed to providing the highest level of public safety service, police and fire. That is a top priority. It's one of our strategic goals and objectives to, to have a safe city. So, again, we talked about earlier about what we do in our budget process, and some of the things that we're doing. And should the, the public safety tax not pass, it's just gonna put additional pressure on staff to see what services that we provide are truly essential, and what we can, what services we're gonna have to, to cut back on.
Let me reframe and ask the question slightly differently. Maybe we bring up, uh, the police or fire chief. So, if we ha- had, or have had, um, decreases in personnel, what do we do? I mean, we just recently had a number of personnel that went and worked on the airport fire, I believe? And so how do we deal with, well, at that point, we had, uh, a full shift that was gone. How do we handle that? That's, you, you've lost three people right there, right off the bat. Maybe you can talk to that and, and talk about some of the things that we've done.
Excellent questions again, and, and thank you for the plug. Um, we just, uh, got that crew back today from the airport fire, nice and safe and sound. So, uh, they were out there doing some great work. Uh, these are things that, uh, as a fire agency, we plan on. It is part of our, our staffing that we realize is gonna come up. We, um, we help not only our own communities, but our neighbors throughout the state. And so, um, all fire agencies are part of a mass mutual aid assistance program, and we will go to help. In that, in that respect, uh, basically what that means is, we will accrue some overtime. Some people will pick up additional shifts, either whether it's gonna be voluntary shifts, or that they're gonna be forced hired to come and fill. We will never leave our minimal staffing below the standards of which we set. We will always make sure that the, the city is taken care of first. Um, and if we're not allowed, if we're not able to meet the minimum of staffings here, by sending people out, we won't send people out. Sierra Madre is, is gonna be taken priority over anything else. Uh, so I hope that.
Chief, and when we do incur overtime costs, that is, that is re- reimbursed by the state.
That was on my mind, thank you for pulling it back out. Um, yes, we, we don't accrue any costs for, for this overtime. Uh, it is all covered by, uh, basically, it'll end up being federal funds or, or state funds. We get reimbursed for all overtime hours, for, for every, every staff member during the deployments for the mutual aid. So, yeah, thank you for bringing that back up.
Any other questions out there? We've got, we've got a mic here. Why don't we switch to the mic, um, and we can use that? And what I'm going to do, this is a, a funky mic, sometimes it doesn't work. So, we'll, we'll try it there, and then I'll do what I've done before and just repeat the question. That way we make sure that we get it. We are broadcasting this so that, that people at home can, can see it. So, go ahead.
Mic test.
There we go.
So, it, um, you know, everything I've heard tonight says, we really need to do this. Is this measure PP, is this what this is called?
It is measure PS.
PS, sorry. Um, and to sell it to my neighbors, and I have, you know, many neighbors. It seems, seems that the underlying issue is, it's the, it's such an, uh, competitive environment. Isn't there a staff shortage overall, police, fire? Isn't, isn't it partly because frankly, you know, it's a tough job? These are both tough jobs, and it's demanding jobs, and we need to pay appropriately? And, um, and I've heard about, you know, poaching, poaching, uh, kind of bonuses. And frankly, I think I might change careers if I were younger and go to Torrance, but, uh, too late. But, is this fundamentally part of the problem? Cause when I go to, to talk to my friends about, uh, uh, single residence, almost five hundred dollar a year tax, I wanna be able to give them a simple answer. Like, this is it. We, we're, we, you know, to retain our, our police and fire, we, we need to come up, uh, and, and pay, uh, in a competitive fashion, and we can't do that without this PS.
So, so let me try to, to restate a little bit, is, is that i- if both the chiefs could talk about it, and it sounds like, uh, our city attorney has, but, but it'd be great to, to hear about the competitive environment that there is out there, both in the county and the state. But before we do that, let me turn it to, to the city attorney.
So, it's totally fine to talk about the competitive environment generally, but what I wanna emphasize is, this group here is not gonna provide an argument for or against the initiative. So, your, your question was kind of phrased as to how you can, I think you used the term, sell it to your neighbors. We don't do that here. We will provide anyone that's interested the information, and then they can make the arguments to whoever they want, either for or against. But with respect to the specific question about, uh, retention and recruiting and poaching, et cetera, you know, the, the chiefs can feel free to answer that.
And, and if you wanna know more about the measure, you, you've got, you know, the proponents here tonight, they can talk about it. I mean, there, there's also people, um, from the, um, the unions that, that you can do when they're off duty, you can talk to them about it as well.
Mayor Protam, I, I think this might also help, and, and one of the things that's unique about Sierra Madre is that the majority of our revenue comes from property taxes. Next is the UUT. What we don't have that a lot of our neighboring agencies has is the car dealership, car dealerships, and the large malls, and, and super centers. So we don't have the tax base for that additional revenue.
All right, so let's talk about, about supply and demand of, of officers out there.
Thank you again for that question. So, to give you an overview, I know earlier today, this, uh, a question was, uh, posed about, uh, maybe contracting out to, or outsourcing it to other agencies. So to give you an estimate, I did look into the LA County Sheriff's taking over this department. Just to give you an idea, right now it's six point five million, with increases of half million to a million dollars a year. That is for two police vehicles to put Sierra Madre on the side of their car, responding from Temple City. They are not going to provide the white glove service. To get a three-minute response, when you look at the national average response time for police officers to a call, for emergency calls, it's anywhere between seven to ten minutes, we're at three minutes. I know geographically, we're much smaller, anyhow. But, uh, for non-emergency, it's about, it's a minimum of thirty minutes plus. All across the board, emergency and non-emergency, we're at three minutes, just to give you an idea. So I think, the reason we have such a, um- So I think the reason we have such a good median household price coupled with low crime rate, I mean, we are very, very low on crime. We're probably one of the lowest cities, not only in Southern California, but in the state of California. To go into retention, like I said, currently I have one open position or one coming up open position. I've only had three applicants. Yes, there are officers that aren't seeking careers in law enforcement. However, those that are seeking want to get paid. For example, I came from a very large city. I have full medical. I had a pension, take-home vehicle, cell phone, et cetera. Here we have one watch commander phone that's used by all the officers in every shift. Difficult to get equipment, you know, police vehicles. We had somebody send me an email about three cars that we just purchased to replace the old ones. We have vehicles here that are somewhere like 10 years old or five plus years old. The California average is five years or a hundred thousand miles. We drive them five plus years and a hundred and fifty thousand miles before we replace them. So as far as retention, like I said, the only thing I can really provide is a good work environment and a great community. But I have those challenges. I, I can't pay the salaries they deserve, the benefits they deserve.
And without this measure, we fall further behind.
Correct.
Thank you.
Correct. It's about bringing in good people that are willing to come here and, and really be committed and loyal, not only to their department, but to, to our, our citizens.
Just to, to kind of recap, I know it was touched on a little bit by the city manager and Mayor Protem. Fire department had, back before we became career, there was the, the talks in the town halls for some of those that I know I've seen the audience had attended with Arcadia basically providing the service for fire. The community spoke up loud and clear at that point and said, no, we want our own fire department. To be honest with you, the, the price back then was more than we were paying it. So the, we couldn't afford probably that amount at that time. It's been a while, as the city manager said, since we've reached out to Los Angeles County, but they are no better off than any other fire department. They are struggling probably more than anybody else to recruit and retain their folks. So putting, taking on additional responsibilities, you know, I could leave that for you guys to kind of imagine. But I was definitely told by their fire chief in, in a conference that nobody could even afford them anymore. So, you know, aside from actually going out for a direct bid from them, I can, I can tell you that cost is more than what we're, what we're currently funding our fire department at. The interesting thing about public safety, right, is we, especially in the fire department, we respond with no borders. We help out our neighbors, they help us out. And in order to do that, we have to be, if not equal, better than who we are responding with. We have that here in this town. And so these other cities that are paying these astronomical bonuses, and this is happening on the fireside as well, it's happening in private ambulance companies that are hiring people with big bonuses. And so it's a competitive profession out there. So we have the staff here that can provide any level of care that you will find in your neighbor and agencies, right? But we are still competing with those salaries. So we, as Chief Barantia said, we have to create something special here, which we have. And that's why a lot of my folks work here is because of the work-life balance. They are, they are making a salary. They know that the community cares about them and they're, and they're, they're giving their all. So again, whether we can afford to contract out, that would be, remain to be seen. We'd have to go out for bid for that, but every word that I've talked, you're going to be, we're going to be paying more. Not officially, but that is the word that I've got, just from talking to my peers. So hopefully that answers that question.
Great. Thank, thank you very much. Do we have other questions out there?
So my question is, how is multi-resident defined in the major? For example, this makes duplexes, homes with an ADU, you know, they exit at the same rate as a fifteen-year-old apartment.
Great. So I'll repeat, the question is, in that is how is multi-unit defined? Is it defined with, you know, how many units? What does it change? Be different based on the number of units? Is ADUs considered in, in the multi-unit definition?
Yeah, thank you. So a multi, a multiple residential unit parcel, which is the term used in the measure, is defined to mean all parcels that are improved with more than one residential unit. Now, that's a little bit confusing because when you hear that, you think to yourself, well, okay, you have a single-family home and you have an ADU and that's technically two residential units on one lot. But the definition of a single-family residential parcel also takes into account that a home can have, a single-family home can have an ADU or a JAD, JADU, a junior ADU or both in addition to the single-family home and still constitute a single-family residential parcel for purposes of this, for purposes of this measure. I think what it's going to come down to, we have these definitions in the measure, but the measure also contemplates refinement at the staff level, if this passes, in order to advance the objective of this. And most likely, you're going to see some refinement at the staff level to kind of correspond with the zoning that we have in the city to, to tax those parcels at the appropriate levels. So to, to answer your question directly about ADUs, ADUs on single-family parcels are considered one, are, are considered a single, are considered a single-family parcel. It's all taxed as one unit. A multifamily, so duplexes, apartments, those would all be considered multiple residential unit parcels. The gray area here for us that we're going to have to figure out at the staff level is what happens to duplexes in single-family zones, which is now allowable under state law. That's something we're going to have to figure out at the staff level. It's not directly addressed here in this measure.
I think a reminder on this, this was a citizen initiative. So, you know, there's always going to be some things that the citizens, when they put an initiative together and they put it on the ballot, then the city has to go and interpret that, that language. And so that's part of what I think the city attorney is trying to say. By nodding, I, I see that. All right. I, I think there's one other thing I would like to, to, to try to cover tonight. And I'm going to call on our city clerk to just talk about the, the, where we are in the election process. If you could just tell us, like, when the booklets come out, when ballots come out. And we'll go ahead and have her come up and just, just to make sure everyone knows kind of what the, the election process is, is here, if that's okay.
Good evening. I am Laura Aguilar, the city clerk for the city of Sierra Madre. I also operate as the city's election official. In my capacity, I receive any citizen initiatives or process any election-related materials. And I, and the city of Sierra Madre city clerk's office works with Los Angeles County clerk to put together the voter information guide. The voter information guide is scheduled to go out to all the voters approximately October 8th. And the vote-by-mail ballots will also go out that week. The, the actual polling centers will open 10 days prior to Election Day. And within Sierra Madre, we will have voting centers open the Saturday before the November 5th election. And then on the actual Election Day, November 5th, the vote centers will be open the full day. And if you choose, if the voters of Sierra Madre choose to submit their ballot, their vote-by-mail ballot, they may do so by either mailing it directly through the post office service. They may drop it off here at City Hall in our Dropbox that we have here. It's in a secured location. And then your third option is, as a voter, is to drop off your mail-in ballot at the vote center if you choose to do it that way. Your other option then is to also vote in person. And I'm happy to answer any additional questions that anyone may have about the election specifically.
Great. Well, we're right at time. So I think we're going, going to wrap up. There's a couple of things I'd like to say in closing. The first is that, as I said at the beginning, this is the first of three town halls we're having. The next one will be Octo, will be Thursday, October 10th at six to seven PM, right here in, in the city chambers. And then the last one, I believe, I don't know when the last one is, unless someone can grab it. There we go. October 22nd, also from six to seven PM. So.
No, the third one is in the city council.
Oh, that's right. The third one is city council. Thank you for correcting me. Yes, so it's the city council, which, which starts at 5:30 that, that evening. So we will have two, another one that's a format like this, and then we'll have it as a part of the city council meeting. So I'd like to, to thank all of you for coming out tonight. I'd like to thank the city staff for being here and answering all of the questions. And I think there'll be some folks sticking around here if you want to talk to the proponents and learn, have, have other questions about the measure that the city can't answer on kind of why they're advocating for and why they support it. So with that, thank you very much and have a great evening.